Evening, everyone. We're going to begin. And for those who just came in, if you want to speak, there's forms up here for you to fill out your topic. You go ahead and roll call.
Chair Bridget Keating.
Present.
Vice Chair Kristi Mossback.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor Materio.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Okay. A moment of silence. For those who have passed since our last meeting, you can stand.
We have Anna Maria Rivera, who passed on October 20th, 2025. She was 94 years old. The aunt of Liz Estella, our utility bill operations specialist. We also lost Jeannie Jacobs on November 6th, 2025. She was 75 years old and she was a resident since 1986. May both of them rest in peace and condolences to the family.
And Pastor Stan?
Thank you, Mary. Let's look to the Lord. Rejoice in the Lord always. I will say it again. Rejoice. Let your gentleness be evident to all, for the Lord is near. Do not be anxious about anything, but in every situation, by prayer and petition and with thanksgiving, present your requests to God. And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and your minds. Heavenly Father, in this place, this evening, we seek your divine guidance. Give us good discernment, knowledge and wisdom to carry out your will. We come before you in thy precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance, if we could. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Stan.
Okay. Is this, is there any other speakers that would like to speak tonight? Are you still filling out the forms? Okay, okay. Oh, then we'll start with Tim. I'm sorry, we'll let John speaks. It's, I don't know, for those of you, I don't know, for those of you don't know.
Tie. He doesn't wear a tie.
Our Commissioner John Maples had resigned because he's moving on to a bigger seat. So we'll give him a personal privilege to speak.
John Maples, 6401 Travis Road.
Welcome, John.
Been a long time since I've had to give my address before speaking. Mayor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Council. Good evening.
Evening.
Town manager, town attorney, staff, good evening. I wanted to stop by this evening in the, well, town, with a lot of people here this evening. I did not look at the agenda, so I think you guys are going to have your hands full this evening, which is going to be exciting. But I wanted to stop by and say thank you. I've reflecting on my time here in the town. A little over nine years and most of that I've served on the board, on the council in some capacity. So a little bittersweet, but I wanted to come and say thank you to each one of you. I appreciate the time that we've had to, the opportunity to serve together. And so to the town for all the hard work that they do and to the residents, I've been committed. And we are excited. Anyway, I wanted to stop in and say hello to each of you and say thank you for your time. Thank you for serving this town and doing such a great job that all of you do. So thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service to the town. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Hey, I want to, John, I want to say that it's been an honor to serve with you. You're a man of great integrity and wisdom and you added so much to this board. You will be greatly missed.
Sorry. Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. As a matter of procedure, the first meeting is the CRA meeting.
Yes, sir.
So a lot of those comments are probably for the third agenda. We have three agendas tonight. So if you're not speaking about Lake Clark Shore's business, I would hold your comments for that. Okay.
Okay.
These first two agendas should go quick. We hope.
Yes, we hope. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It approved. Okay, we have approval for consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Is this where? Okay, you got it.
The two resolutions tonight, the first one is for amending the last year's budget, which ended September 30th. And as you know, we're going to have a lot of discussion on funding the bridge that was completed in September. And as you already know, we'd like to transfer $104,000 for the CR budget on the half of the project for the lights and half of the project for, it wasn't a project, but it was a change order for the unforeseen debris that we found under the bridge. That totaled 104,000 and change. So that's the first resolution. If you have any questions, please ask. But that's.
Do we have any questions for the town manager?
Good.
All right, we'd like to get a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-03, which submits the CRA budget amendment for fiscal year 2024-2025 to the Lake Clark Shores Town Council for adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we have CR.
Yes. Yes. By Florida statutes, we're required for the CRA to have goals every year. Last year, we had three goals, which was putting lighting in community park, was contracting with a consultant to do a master plan for our three parks on Forest Hill Boulevard. The CRA is the corridor of Forest Hill Boulevard, by the way. And doing some research, if we should hire a consultant or not, some cost benefit analysis on getting for CRA. So I'll be glad to report that the lighting project was completed. We not only did we contract with a consultant, we completed the master plan for the three parks and we're in the next phase of looking into grants. So so the discussion is what are our proposed grant goals and objectives for this year? We came up with three and we can always add more and these are on our website and we do update them quarterly. The first one is to review actually the 1916 plan for the CRA. It's about 10 years old now, so we should definitely look at it and see what the consultant came up with the plan of redevelopment for that corridor. The second one would be to promote quality development. That's always should be our goal and to talk to the stakeholders and the property owners of the Forest Hill Corridor to see if they combine their properties to make quality development. And the third is, which we're already doing, is apply for grants for the park improvements. We have already two grants in for Memorial Park and for Community Park and we're looking for Pine Tree Park. So those are our goals. If it takes another a motion to approve that resolution.
Can I make a comment?
Of course.
You know, last year's goals were like hard things that you could touch and feel, like putting up lighting and you know, creating a master plan. You know, you could touch and feel those. This year, all these goals are very worthy, but we don't have anything that you can touch and feel. Are we going to consider the implementing any portion of the master plan? Is that, could that be one of our goals or do we not have the money for that? We can start chipping away at it or do we wait till we have a big coffer?
Well, if you start before you get the grant funding, that 50% won't be reimbursed. So you always try to get the grant first because soon as, that's when the clock starts is when you actually awarded the grant. Then you get 50 cents on the dollar for what you spend after that date. So I would recommend we wait to see if those grants.
Okay. Are we anticipating a grant big enough to cover half of the work?
It's going to take.
That's going to be a lot of.
Multi-years to, we're breaking up pieces of each park and going after those pieces. The one we did for Memorial, no, Pine Tree Park was just the actual west portion of the planned park, not of the east portion of Memorial Park. We're going for the part near the water. So Community Park, it's recreation replacement of recreational equipment. So it's going to take multiple years of grants to fulfill that. It's a very big project.
But I don't think we can expect, I'm asking, can we expect 50% of, I mean, this project is over a million dollars easily. Can we expect the grants to cover half of it going forward or is that just?
That's our goal. This is to get, some grants can actually be used for matching with that 50%. So you can be creative on how you match funds. But first, we got to get one awarded. And the one of them that we're asking for awarding has some fees to actually, remember, we have a concept of the master plan. We want to get some plans that are actually shovel ready with the finite design elements in there, which we have not completed yet.
Okay.
And as I understand it, isn't there a process where you can only have so many grants in place before you move on?
That's correct. With the Firdap grants, in particular, you can only have three applications and two awards or something like that. So yeah, but there's other grants. There's another one we're applying for is the, it's the Lake and Land Conservation Grant. So that's a different kind of grant.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the Lake Clark Shores Community Redevelopment Agency Goals and Objectives for Fiscal Year 2026 and place the information on the CRA website.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. All right, the next item is mine. I brought this up last meeting and I really want to go on a basic concept and if we can have a consensus and branding the CRA is, can be, we want to do it internally. So we're not looking for an outside agency and I believe that it could help with the whole presentation of the master plan, the park and I will say branding, but defining our community and the parks itself. Doesn't have to be over the top. I think maybe start with a survey from the residents similarly we do with the parks and come back and we're not looking to do an outside agency because I know the last time we went out, it was, they were asking a lot of money and we're trying to save money. We're trying to be very financially prudent with this, but I think having a, some kind of tagline, just to start off with, might be helpful in future development and future economic development. Is there any?
So would, the staff would be doing this? There would be no additional cost to it?
That's the way, that's the way I'm looking at it. Yes.
I think it'd be kind of fun to invite the community to submit possible taglines.
Absolutely. I was going to do some kind of survey, similar like we did with the parks.
And then whoever, you know, whoever gets chosen will get, you know, lunch at.
A turkey.
Yes, absolutely.
Especially Joe.
Absolutely want community, community input.
More than our per diem.
No, absolutely want community input and along with the council input and staff supporting us. I think it's a team effort. We can get something. And in the end, if we get suggestions or recommendations that we don't like, we don't have to move forward with anything. But I think it would be a good starting point for us to look at it. I know a lot of other communities have around us and that's, we don't have to do it, but I think it's, it would help our, in our future economic development as far not only the parks, but the CRA.
If you feel the staff has the bandwidth to take this on, then I'm in support of this being explored because as I've said multiple times, I refuse to spend $30,000 of our very small CRA budget to develop a tagline.
I agree.
I agree completely.
I just think there's, we can go about it internally because we are a small town and we don't have the funds to spend. They, I brought this to the staff and I think they were okay with us moving forward. If I'm, am I correct?
Yes.
Mayor, would a tagline for the CRA be different than a tagline for the town?
Man?
Yes.
It's going to get very confusing. So that's why I would do solicit both at the same time. And we can also talk about this at a regular council meeting so we can keep talking about this and options next month and the next month after that. We'll put it on the regular agenda if that's okay with you. And we'll talk about going out for a tagline for both the CRA and the town.
Thank you.
I think that would be prudent.
Do we need a motion or just?
No, just, just a consensus. Just the shake of the heads.
Is Emily shaking her head over there?
She's okay. She's all right. No, she likes this stuff.
All right, I think, I think that's the agenda. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. All right, move on to the next.
Second agenda.
That's the town council.
It's the public hearing on amending the budget.
Okay. You ready, Mary?
Yes.
Drill call, please.
Mayor Bridget Keating.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kristi Mossback.
Here.
President Pro Tem Taylor Materio.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Freebold.
Here.
Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you. We have again, two resolutions tonight. Again, this is amending the budget. The first one is very unique. It's actually, we waited to this before the bridge was done to fund the bridge. So we knew there'd be a lot of transfers. So we said, let's do it at the end when the bridge is done. And the second resolution is just a normal, every year resolution to balance out the budget that ended on September 30th. So let's talk about the first one. The first one, we're going to transfer 2.9, $2,950,000 to fund the budget, to fund the bridge and to also fund the budget. And where are those funds coming from? We have $945,000 extra in the surtax fund. The surtax fund is that extra one cent sales tax that you all pay in Palm Beach County from six cents, six cents to seven cents. That sunsets this year, actually, at the end of this year, but we have 945,000 and it has to go in for infrastructure and obviously a bridge is infrastructure. It lasts over five years. So we would like to use $945,000 from that fund. We also had utilities that went through that bridge. We put in a new water line. We also put in new pipes. So the utility fund will pay $350,000 for that bridge. We just talked about in the last agenda that 104,000 is coming and change from the CRA. We also took out a loan in 2019, which was smart because we actually got a low percentage rate of 2% and we were making more than that. But that, the loan proceeds, because we had to show the state that we had money to pay for this bridge because the state of Florida gave us $600,000 to pay, to help us with this bridge. So by showing that we had money, now we're using that loan proceeds of 779,000 and change. And we also have a thing called gas tax. You all pay gas tax when you refill your vehicles and we get a portion, every municipality, every county gets that. We have a balance of $190,000 and that has to go for transportation projects. Obviously, a bridge is transportation. So the net out of that 2.9 million dollars, we need about $880,000 is coming from the general fund, unreserved fund balance, which we had roughly about 2.6 million, the last count. So it'll leave about 1.7 million. And that was better than my estimate we talked about several months ago. So if you approve, we have to read the resolution, if you'd be so kind, Mr. Town Attorney. But if you approve all this, all this will be funded for the bridge and amend the budget.
Resolution 2025-23, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending the appropriated funds of the fiscal year 2024/2025 operating budget.
That's all he has to do is read the title.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-23 to approve amending the budget for the fiscal year 24-2025.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved.
And just as a way of clarification, the reason that we're reading this resolution and not the next resolution is that this resolution requires a budget amendment by transferring funds from the unencumbered reserves and it requires a more formal procedure. The second resolution is a requirement of state statute, which says we cannot have any over expended line items within the budget. And if we have under expended our total budget, we can transfer funds from one line item to another to accomplish that. It's not taking any monies from reserves. It's simply moving monies within the budget of under expended to over expended line items to balance the budget so that no line item is over expended. And that's a requirement of state law.
Is that going to your next?
Yes, so the second resolution is all standards stuff that we would have every year. We, one was approved. We started a public works department of $22,000. We had transfers for that. We also had a little bit of extra in legal and a little bit extra that $10,000 and we needed $10,000 for our protective inspections or our building official. And also we had a typo. Thank you, Kristi, for noticing that on the last page, the amendment for the contractual services, which is the building official, it still had the wrong department of legal counsel. So we'll just cross that out because the, all the numbers and the counts are correct. It's just the heading.
I actually read all this.
Thank you for reading everything because my eyes are crossed. But.
I couldn't sleep last night.
But we recommend approval. These are very normal yearly adjustments.
So second resolution?
Yes. Need a. No, he doesn't have to. I don't have to read that. You don't have to read that one.
Okay.
I recommend approval of Resolution 25-24, authorizing the town manager to make any necessary budget transfers between departments within a fund for fiscal year 24-25.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second, whatever.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did I just second my own motion? Couldn't tell if he said anything or not.
I'm waiting for. You ready, Mary? Okay.
Mayor Bridget Keating.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kristi Mossback.
Here.
President Pro Tem Taylor Materio.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Okay. Are we ready for speakers? Tim Dodgery.
Tim Dodgery, 1410 Keller Road. Couple items tonight. You were talking about funding the expenses for the bridge. I would like to see published in some public forum, the exact numbers that we're spending on the bridge. We're talking 2.95 million. That's what was just shared. That's a half a million dollars more than we originally planned for the bridge. Okay, that was the original contract for the bridge. Again, change orders happen. I understand that. But that was half a million dollars is a little bit aggressive, I think, and everything else. And I would love to see all the expenditures we've had on the bridge and where they're coming from and that sort of thing. I would really love to see that published on the website or anything else that goes out to the public in Lake Clark Shores. I think it's important for us to see where we're spending our money. Number two, Forest Hill. I've mentioned this before and I'll mention it again and I'll mention it again and I'll mention it again. We need speed enforcement on Forest Hill Boulevard. Okay, it's, they're pretty aggressive out there turning onto Pine Tree and getting into the community. Both of you come in that way. Taylor comes in on West Lake and Paul and Greg comes in that way too. I mean, it gets pretty aggressive and it's scary. It is scary. Especially the people coming from the west to the east, especially the people that are going south on 95. They just don't slow down and they are, they have a lot of high rates of speed. I've seen a really bad accident in the last 60 days there at the train tracks. I don't know if that was speed related or not. I've mentioned this in past to the previous chief and I'll mention it to our new chief too. We need speed enforcement there. We had it for a while. We had it with Bill in the past and he wrote a lot of tickets for speeding there. We had a lot with Officer Polus, but I just don't see it anymore. I really don't see it anymore. And it's, it's a concern to me. We really got to get people to slow down there. And I've almost had a couple accidents since the bridge opened back up. Okay, and it's, it's a problem. I think we need to attend to. In addition to that, the trees in the median to the west of the stoplight at Pine Tree and Forest Hill. A lot of blind spots from them. They either need to be gone or significantly trimmed. Okay, it's a problem. There's huge blind spots there and it's dangerous. It's just plain dangerous. And something needs to be done about that. Last thing, you're bringing this up tonight and you're discussing it tonight. The Tackett Memorial Rock. And I've, I've mentioned this in passing a number of times. It's time for it to be moved in a prominent place. It should be next to where the tree goes. And my feeling is it should be lit up during the holiday season and it needs to be cleaned up. I don't think it's been cleaned up in, I don't know how long. The tree was a big deal for Jim and it was a big deal for his wife. It was a huge deal for them. And we need to provide people the ability to see who this event, the memorial tree lighting is about. And it was a big deal for them. It always was a big deal for them and we need to move that rock over to where the trees are. The tree's going to be, okay, and it should stay there permanently. Personal belief, you can choose to do whatever you want. Okay, but that's my thoughts on that. And you mentioned tonight, taglines, both for CRA and for the town. And I always thought this was a really good one and came from Bob Xiahou. Okay, and I've mentioned it before and he always mentioned Lake Clark Shores as being the jewel of Palm Beach County. Okay, and that would be my feelings about that. Okay, I would support that as a tagline for our town and our CRA. It comes out of Bob Xiahou, then I got to give him credit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Gonzalez, 1420 South Lake Court. I was called, I was called as an attorney to be here and to bring something up to Town Council. But I'm, want to be very clear, I'm here as a resident. So mayor, vice mayor, town council, staff and chief. Before I talk about official business, I do want to reiterate what Tim Dodgery said about the Tackets. Jim and Judy were fantastic and I grew up just two doors down from them. So I have very, very fond memories of them and their service to our town. Joe, I wasn't able to speak during the budget, but thank you very much for putting all the budget together. I know you have many sleepless nights, making sure that all the, you know, ones and zeros and everything lines up perfectly. I don't know if everybody knows this, but you are a CPA and very, very well educated and very well suited for our town to take good care of it and keep us in a very, very good financial position. So I just wanted to make that just brief comment. So what brings me here this evening, 7306 Clark Road. Myself and few other residents, which you will hear from shortly after me, were very concerned about the activity that is going on at that particular property. Somebody that has much more information than I do is Mr. Vernon Jones, who is a private investigator, both in the state of Florida, I think Texas and North Carolina. But he has been contracted by a bond company, the insurance company that ensures the bonds when people skip bail. Unfortunately, we do have a fugitive living in our community and he is responsible. Unfortunately, we do have a fugitive living in our community and he is responsible for actually apprehending this person. And more specifically, there are several residents that are very, very concerned about the activity that is going on there. So some of this activity has been spoken about and talked about on Facebook, this is just a very casual opportunity to bring it up in an official capacity to the town council, allowing the town to become aware so that we can work in partnership to hopefully address this and rectify it, thank you very much for everything that you guys have done and continue to do for our town. And without further ado, I'll reserve the rest of my time for Mr. Vernon Jones and some of the other residents that would like to speak specifically on 7306 Clark Road, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm sorry, I can't put my back to everyone. My grandparents adopted 11 children in the 1950s and my mother was one of these 11 children. And her family's here from Palm Beach County. So that taught me to be sincere, to be brief and to be seated. So I'll try to make this as quickly as I can, my name is Vernon Jones and as he mentioned, you understand why I'm here. My wife is actually covering another location of, for the potential fugitive for the state of North Carolina. I'm going to speak in two basic terminologies, one is the standard law enforcement terminology. And as well as judicial and then the common terms, the subject who's known as a fugitive has warrants for the state of North Carolina. So local law enforcement in the state of Florida unfortunately don't have the jurisdiction to hold him because there is no detainer because he's not an NCIC full extradition. Therefore, the insurance company who wrote the bond has subcontracted myself and my wife to see about taking him into custody if we find him and bring him back. Their charges, just so that you know, stalking, domestic violence protective orders, violation of two counts. What brought us here is because there is a public record of a, an attempt by the owner, the landlord for the house there to evict this gentleman and his household of people who were there, guess, God knows whatever else they're doing there. We're waiting to put eyes on him, he has been spotted in the neighborhood at a nearby convenience store and we're watching multiple locations. Once we find him, we'll take him into custody and we will remove him from your community and we will directly extradite him to the state of North Carolina. At that point in time, what they do is up to them, you should be aware, he has been arrested here in Palm Beach County before for patient brokering and conspiracy for patient brokering, which fits the mold of the scenario that is potentially there. Your residents can speak on that, we have not seen that, but we want to make sure there is a potential for it and those problems. Chief, I'm sorry I didn't speak to you myself, but we came in at all hours of the night, you know how that goes with us, we checked in with the sheriff's office. And then from there, we started doing surveillance and your neighbors are very, they pay attention extremely well. So therefore, that is why we're here, if you have further questions, we'll be happy to answer whatever we can, it's a public forum. You obviously know the address, you have an idea who the person is, and since we've already here and we've said it, subject's name has dreads, black male approximately six foot two, 220 pounds and his name is Adrian Rogers. So you can find that, it is public record, it is there, but once again, unfortunately, because the state of North Carolina didn't put it in the database that we're used to. They cannot take him into custody and hold him here and lock him into the jail here in Palm Beach County for extradition, we would have to do that and then extradite him. I've had, I'm watching my phone that way in case my wife calls me saying that she spotted him and that way at that point we'll move quickly to take him into custody, we're just trying to be a little bit more proactive, we did not have to come talk to you, we didn't have to come talk to your neighbors. But we care, we're all a community, no matter what, and he and the people that are here with him are a problem. So if we can remove him to help minimize the problem, the rest is up to you as a town. And I hope you all make the right decision.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, you have any questions?
Is he known to be at 7306 Clark?
Yes ma'am.
You, you have seen him there?
If we see him, we're gonna take him to custody, your other residents can speak on, on that, that's why we're here doing so much surveillance. Yes ma'am, I don't, I don't mind sharing it, it's, I can give it if that's okay, I don't mind, tell me when you're ready. It's 786-426-1623, I'll repeat that, 786-426-1623. My name is Vernon Jones and my wife's name is Christina Tuller, her number is 786-379-9206. And we'll do everything we can to remove him as peacefully and quickly as possible. I'll stay for a few minutes.
Well, thank you for all you're doing, I'm sure you'll follow up with the chief if there's any, I know you done the PBSO, you already worked with them, but just to, just to follow up with communications, I'm sure they appreciate it.
I'm the Autumn Walsh Child, I'm the one who was in Hollywood Mall, those of us who are over the age of 50 from 1981.
Yes.
That started my world.
Thank you. Okay. Who would like to go next, Kelly?
Kirk Patrick, I'm at 7301 West Lake Drive, I'm here for the same cause, obviously, I unfortunately live right behind 7306, kind of diagonal. We've had problems there before, that was nothing, this is a major problem, I have what seems to be prostitution, drugs, bonfires, I'm not sure, I have three children. I've been living, I've lived here for 15 years, I don't feel safe at night. I'm not so concerned even with what they're doing, I don't, but there, the fire concern is horrible, I go to bed not knowing, like, if this fire gets out of control, it's right next to me and I'm dead asleep. And we know there's illegal activity going on. We know this horrible human has taken over this property and as much as we keep asking for help, I think it's almost out of your hands, but I'm asking you to keep helping us and keep trying. Because this isn't just some horrible neighbor who's making noise at night, this is gone beyond that, we have illegal people. You know, a guy with a warrant out, I, I, on the way over here, just saw the two gentlemen yelling at a young female to get her ass back inside. So I mean, there, there could be trafficking, I mean, it's disgusting and I'm very concerned for the safety of the whole neighborhood, especially for those of us who live right next to this. So I just want to make sure we continue following this and do what we can as a, as a group to move on and get back to our beautiful community, that, that's the reason I moved in here, you know, and especially next to the park and next to, next to us right now, I mean, they're right there, a stone throws away.
Yes, sir.
Let me, if I may. Because everything that is said here is recorded and is public, I want to caution everyone to be very careful about what they say. And since we have a manager who is willing to meet with the residents to discuss this. I think it would be appropriate for those residents who are here who are very concerned to sit down with the manager and not put all of their comments on the public record.
Okay, I mean, thank you, and it's entirely up to you.
And that's not meant to, to silence anyone, it's just meant for a bit of protection and caution. Because the record is public and if somebody misstates something, it could be problematic for them.
Kelly, I am totally sympathetic to what you're going through and it's horrible. Mr. Town Attorney, are we allowed to ask a show of hands of people who are here to address this cause, because we have a full room?
Absolutely.
Raise your hand if this is one of the reasons, oh my, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
And we appreciate and understand the severity of the issue and I just think if you have input that you feel is important. Meeting with the manager would be very appropriate.
Joe, would it be, would you be able to be, give cards to all of these people that just raised their hand?
Of course.
With knowing that, does everyone, does anybody else want to speak?
There, there are 10 cents each.
Joseph F. Labello, the F is for Prugal.
You, are you Gisella? Okay. Okay, no worries.
Your name.
Your name and address, please, Carmen Corrios, 7321 Clark Road, around the corner. Thank you.
I didn't know if it's possible because maybe, I don't know if it's happening anywhere else, but we have these verbo homes, I think they're for rent or something like that on weekends or something like that, very close to each other. And I think this also presents problems in the community when it's so close, I've had buses come in with all kinds of stuff, same address, but I'm thinking they're so close to each other, there's one down the street, there's two on the same block, is there, I know that when you do, for senior citizens, they have to be a mile away from each other, is there something we can do like that where we can say if you're gonna put a verbo up, it has to be a mile away from another one? So we have some control of what happens in the area.
Yes. So I'm just.
We can talk about vacation rentals, so the, I think you're talking about vacation homes, I'll be glad to talk about that in the public record because that has nothing to do with ADA, so, and the Fair Housing Act, so I'll, I'll be glad to talk about that here or after, but the state mandates what we can and what we cannot do on vacation rentals. And we have an application and we, we have our interests protected as much as possible in that application. Again, you can call me at any time, but that is something we could talk about in a public.
This house is also listed as that way.
Yeah, we, we understand that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on what the manager said, for years, cities were able to regulate rentals. But the state legislature in their infinite wisdom has taken away a lot of the city's ability to do that and we now have to comply with the state statutes as it relates to vacation rentals. And it's made it much more difficult for cities to regulate the rentals.
We're actually, I will speak for myself, I know I'm in agreement with that, that we, if we didn't, we don't have, we don't have a say in the matter because the state has dictated what we can and can't do. Does anybody else would like to speak? Yes. Are you Gisella?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Gisela Moro, I live at 7300 West Lake, I appreciate the legal advice and I appreciate you guys listening to us, I'm just super concerned because this is not happening in my backyard, but it's happening in my neighbor's backyard and it happens to be one of my properties. I love Lake Clark Shores, I have invested a lot, I buy properties, I fix them, I'm happy to see all of these young families that want to raise their kids moving here. We've been complaining about Omar's house for several years, since actually, since I moved here the first time. This seems to be gotten now out of control because now it's more of a serious matter. I don't know what to do, we, we just don't know, we're here to ask for your help because we understand, we had several times, we called the police officers and they showed up and they said, there's nothing we can do, they're not committing a crime. But we're seeing things that we don't like and, and they are concerning, I have a 10-year-old son and I live by myself in my house. And I, I've seen drug activity even at the boat ramp, I've seen what seems to be prostitution during the day, young girls, I don't even know if they're minors or not, coming in and out, so this issue about human trafficking, it is a concern for me. And also, I was thinking about this yesterday, this house was meant to be originally a three-bedroom, two-bath home which now is being advertised as a six-bedroom house. And we have in record, because we, we have proof, somebody says there is 10 or over 10 people living at the property. So how is that septic tank and drain field allowing so many people living under the same roof? Which takes me to another concern that I wanted to bring up. Where are we at as a town regarding the septic tank to sewer situation that I'm all about, I'm in favor of hopefully one day getting public source and I was wondering if there is an update regarding any funds or how much is it going to cost? I don't know if the permits are still open, hopefully we're ready to go in case funding comes and, and we don't miss the opportunity, so I was wondering if there is a way to know if the permitings are still open and what the town is doing about it.
Sure, phase two is permitted and ready to go and we, we applied for one grant and we just found the unfortunate news that we didn't get that one grant, but now we're asking for appropriations of 2.3 million. That would, there's five phases to it, so we're trying to do the best for our residents and find free money.
Is there anything that we can do as residents from our?
Talk to your state legislators.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. And the governor.
Did you want to, also, we're working on the engineering part of it for the next, last phase?
Not.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that all the points?
Anybody else want to speak on Clark?
Ms. Mayor, there, there was a, an email that I received about this property.
He, he's in the audience, you want us to read that one? Okay.
Okay. So the email is from Alan Fromowitz at 7300 Clark Road. So hello, my name is Alan Fromowitz, I'm one of the owners and residents of 7300 Clark Road. Apparently, the house next door to us at 7306 Clark Road has been turned into a halfway house or some multi-resident facility with transient people coming and going throughout the day and night. The house looks like it is not maintained and, and disrepair. The front yard and driveway are eyesores to those of us that live nearby and it's a poor reflection on LCS. Are there tenant occupancy limits in a single-family house in Lake Clark Shores? How many unrelated, non-family members are allowed to occupy a 2,000 square feet property? Thank you for reading my question.
Thank you. Is Parker Hedrick here?
Yeah.
That was just, but all related, okay, that's the comment, public comments and email comments. All right, we have a, we have a motion to approve.
Are they looking for an answer for the, what you just read?
Joe, town manager.
No comment.
No comment.
Sorry, gonna have to go to the mic, Alan. If the mayor allows it.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to know how many unrelated, non-family members can occupy a 2,000.
Sir, could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
From 7300 Clark Road.
I think it's best for them to meet with me and, and give me those questions and I'll talk to the town attorney.
We'll get you the answer.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No, that's not there, we're on waste management.
Oh.
WM. I'm lost, okay, mayor's correct, sorry. Long day.
I so move.
Your motion and a second?
I so move.
You have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, agenda approved, all right, move on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're on to the approval of the waste management contract, that's okay.
Mayor, can I say one thing about what the Clark Road thing?
Yes, sir, yes ma'am.
Thank you, I just want to thank all of y'all for coming and we've heard you loud and clear and, and we won't rest until we've exhausted every option on your behalf, okay?
We are all empathetic, I, I love this town too, I'm a newer resident, but I love this town, I love the community feel and I'm really distraught that, of this issue, so this is news to us and we're definitely, we definitely take it seriously and as you see all the chief stepped out, so I'm sure he's dealing with the issue as well, so we, we take it very seriously.
Do you want to go, do they speak or you want to speak?
Not on that subject.
On the waste management.
Oh, waste management, okay, all right. As you know, we, we started eight months ago negotiating contract with WM who's formerly known as Waste Management. And I'm here to say I'm glad that we finally come to an agreement on a contract. And Waste Management, our WM is in the audience, Jeff Saban and in household, thank you, are, are in the audience, if you have any questions. Obviously, they didn't get everything they wanted, we didn't get everything we wanted, but we, we think we got a good contract. They, our current rate for commercials pretty much stayed the same. Roll-offs went up a few dollars, not a material amount. We're still looking for a five-year contract. So it's all about residential. The great thing about residential in Lake Clark Shore is the town actually pays for your residential. So it's very unique, so it's in your mileage rate. But the town pays the burden of paying this bill and it's in the high three-hundred thousand dollars to pay for all the residential. Most cities put it in your taxes on non-assessed assessments and unincorporated Palm Beach County, which is forty percent. It's all done that way also. So instead of that two-hundred dollars that you pay for SWA, it would be like six-hundred dollars. But anyway, the town negotiated for this, like I said, for about eight months. And we came to, instead of having, paying eighteen dollars, it should have been about seventy-six cents, eighteen dollars seventy-six cents. We're recommending going to twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. We don't like the percentage of sixteen-point-six-five. But when you look at our peers, we're there. And there's, there's a city out there, and I'm not gonna mention them, but are paying as high as thirty-seven dollars a month per household. There's twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents, there's twenty-nine dollars in a district of the county. There's thirty-two dollars, so, but there's less too. There's obviously two in the nineteen dollars where I wanted to be. When I tried very.
And he fought hard.
And I fought, but we came up with this compromise. And also, the other big compromises, they, they wanted some large increases in the interim because they feel we're not in the market. So instead of a three-percent cola, we agreed to a five-percent cola and that's what the same as Green Acres did in their contract. So we thought that was something we could live with. So again, it's, it's, we both had to give, but I think we have a great contract with a great vendor. And I've, I've known Jeff for forty years, forty years, can you believe it? We went to the same preschool.
He was in diapers.
And so we still, we've known each other for a long time and we fought both sides. And Emily was obviously fighting with me. So we think we got a good contract and we're recommending approval. Oh, there was one change that we negotiated today. It was on the carts, which is basically the trash bins, they call them carts. And it's in our favor, but they'll, they'll change up to four-hundred units per the contract. We put it in writing, so out of the fourteen-hundred out there. So that's in front of you, I'm recommending approval.
Motion to approve the solid waste recycling collection and disposal services agreement with WM.
I'll make a second on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So approved.
Thank you, thank you, guys. All right, all right. Take care.
The bridge.
Where am I at? Change order?
Yes.
All right, so now you're telling me where I'm at.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. And then, you know, if you want to follow up with some town manager, I'm sure he'll be happy to.
It's from them. But it's pretty accurate. All right, as you know, in September, we said there was one last change order for the bridge. I like what Tim actually said, I'm actually gonna put all this information on the questions and answers because I like to be as transparent as possible. All the information is in this memo of, on the transparency of, of the three million dollars. But anyway, the, the, the last change order that we had open on September was for that rebar. As you, as you know, there was some discrepancy of how much we had to order for rebar, how much rebar was wasted. And there was some disagreement between the engineer of record and the contractor. So this claim originally was a hundred sixty-one thousand, then it went to ninety-something thousand. We finally have agreed to recommend to the council that we pay for just the steel, which is forty-two thousand dollars, and continue our efforts to, to see if we can get some of that, or if not all of it, paid by the engineer of record. So the other thing is very minor. As you know, the last change order last time had some, it's a, it's a closeout change order. We add up all the asphalt, the concrete, the rocks and everything, and it increased five thousand dollars. So basically, you're approving a change order of sixty-two thousand dollars, nine hundred dollars and change, but fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars was already approved in September. So hopefully, it's a long memo, but hopefully you understand after I explained it all to you. If anybody has a question, so I'm here.
Do we have any questions?
Hey, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider to approve change order number nine, representing a final balancing and closeout of the Pine Tree Lane Bridge Replacement Project in the total amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight and sixteen cents, of which fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-two and four cents was already approved.
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
Thank you all.
Discussion concerning electronic agendas.
Yes, at the, the last meeting, it was discussed, maybe we should get some numbers on, and options for going totally to electronic agendas or some kind of hybrid. So we came up with three options, it's really not a big cost, as you can see. We, I went to Costco and it, you know, to get a laptop today, it's, you know, somewhere between four-hundred and four-hundred fifty dollars. Mayor had a good question about software, you really don't even need software because it comes with Microsoft Edge, which will read PDFs and agendas, so you really don't even need that much in software. So it's, it's very immaterial in cost, if, if, if you want to go to the electronic, it's just how you want to do it. So that's where we came up some options for you guys to consider. First is to leave it as is. Second is to purchase laptops and have staff upload the agenda. So you basically do not take the laptops or the tablets home with you, they're uploaded in front of you. So if you want to go to item number four, you want to go to item number three, you just hit the button and then it'll, it'll self-populate. Or you can go with purchasing laptops, for all of you guys, take them home. When you get here, you just bring up your emails, you click on your agenda. And again, it'll self-populate and then you can hit the agenda. So obviously, anything you choose, you'll still have the, how many agendas do we have today? Four? Before, you'll have the, still the paper for agendas in front of you, which I do and I write all my notes on. So you'll still have that in anything, you, any option you pick. And obviously, another option which we didn't put in there was, you can try it and you could always go back. You know, you don't, there's nothing where, oh, this is stuck forever, you know? We're not talking a lot of money to buy a four-hundred-dollar laptop or a tablet. And if it doesn't work, you can go back to the paper. So it's for you guys to discuss and give us guidance.
Do you have any comments, questions, or do you need a motion or do we just?
I had actually asked Joe if it would be possible to have a little more time with this and potentially move it to next month's agenda.
It's much lighter next month's agenda, so obviously staff has no problem with that.
I'm okay with deferring it.
Just three heads? I'm seeing three heads, okay, good. All right, it's deferred, we'll, we'll put that on the next meeting.
Okay. And I believe this is town clerk's section, about the ordinance?
Let's see what the orders, yeah. Mary, Mary, do you want to read it or you want Charlie to read it? Charlie, you want to read it?
He's louder than me.
This is first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five dash oh-three Certified Recovery Residences. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending Article Seven Supplemental District Regulations of Chapter One Twenty-Five, Zoning of the Town's Code of Ordinances by creating and adopting a new Division Sixteen Certified Recovery Residences to establish procedures for review and approval of certified recovery residences. And there was a typo in the title and we will correct that. And a process for requesting reasonable accommodations from local land use regulations as mandated by Florida statute, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances, providing for severability, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. This is first reading, it's proposed. So there will be a second reading in December. But basically, this has nothing to do with the discussions we had in public comment. Just want to make, make sure everybody knows that. Because the Florida Legislature mandated that all cities and counties, all of us, pass, if, pass rules and regulations on how to review, they call them certified recovery residence. I, other people call them sober homes. So, and also to have procedures in there for appeals, which are also called reasonable accommodations. And you have to obviously follow the Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act.
And what, what the legislature has done is mandated that municipalities have a code section in their code of ordinances, which allows for someone to come in and request reasonable accommodation under the ADA and fair housing. This is another one of those instances where the state is putting more restrictions on the cities. But the statute that the legislature adopted last January or February actually provides that we have to adopt this prior to January one.
Yes.
Thank you.
So if anybody has any questions, we're here to answer them.
Any audience comments? For that item? Counsel comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So approved.
Thank you.
Did you have a particular, did you fill out a form?
I didn't.
Okay, I'll, I'll pick you up in the, at the end. Counsel vacancy.
As you know, we, John was here today, Mr. Maples, and he resigned as of October thirty-first. They call it resign and run, or the term is that we, state statute requires you, before you qualify, that you have to resign from another elected official, another elected position. So we have a vacancy on the council, as you can see. And it, your charter, our charter says, if you have a vacancy for more than one year, you may appoint somebody. So we will have a vacancy for more than one year because this vacancy will not be filled until March of two thousand twenty-seven. So you all should discuss if we want to fill that position or not. Or if we, and if we want to fill the position, how do you want to do it? But it's, this is really counsel-driven and it doesn't have to be done this month or next month or three months from now. It's, you guys can discuss this for a while and make a decision.
I would like to table this until after the first of the year, actually. I've talked to you, Joe, and told you, it's not that I'm opposed to appointing someone, it's just that's what we've been doing. And it's a very, a year's a long time. Not to have somebody, but to appoint somebody for that year. And then that term will be up along with me as well. So I just think that any of the business coming before us, if we run into a problem for the time being, we'll have to resolve it at that time, but I would personally like to wait. That's my feelings.
Any other?
Would we have to make an appointment before April? So it would not be, so we would not bump into the one year?
No.
Problem?
You can do it in February of next year. Correct.
Say in May, so it could stay open for the year plus three, two months.
One of the things that I think about is that when you have to earn it, this, you know, what we do here is important. Not everybody sees it that way, but what we do is important. And in a, in a small towns, it's even more important because the people know you, they know where you live. They know all these things and you see when something's going wrong, they pay attention. So I just, I don't know for how long, but I'd like to see how it just goes with the four people. And let's see what interest is out there, I know there's been some interest. But it may take a little bit longer for it to work, I just don't want to rush into anything at the moment. If you guys see it differently, that's fine, but that's how I feel.
Any other counsel?
I'm okay pushing it to the first of the month to, at that point, you're saying you would then discuss the option.
Yeah, put it on, put it on the agenda in January and start getting terminology. I mean, how we've done it in the past is we've had people who were interested come in, fill out, basically, for lack of a better term, an application. They would go to the back room, we would interview them one by one, go from there. I just don't want it to be one or two people, I want to really see what interest is out there. You know, local government's taking a beating, as you ladies found out, you know, sometimes three hours wait to just get a bank account. You know, but that's, you have an appreciation now, you didn't know that before, did you? So if you're appointing somebody, they don't have to understand our process and what you all have had to been through and what I've been through. I am now the person that has been run against the most up here. And me still sitting here tells you something. It's okay, I, that's why I appreciate what I do here and I work really hard.
And I appreciate you and the history behind, everything that you offer this, the town and this council.
I have visions of this place that I would like to see happen and things, it's got such potential with the CRA. It just takes people who are willing to work and willing to, you know, pound the pavement and find out these investors and network, communicate, do all these different things to bring attention to what we want to do here.
So we have any?
I think there's wisdom in everything that Greg said. I think we can certainly take it up in the new year. I do think that at some point, we should fill the vacancy since it's got, you know, eighteen, sixteen months or whatever it is remaining on the.
Well, right now, it would be, you'd have, well, I mean, you'd have until the election in March of two thousand twenty-six. And here we are now, and qualifying would begin in November then too. So you would have a better idea of somebody who would want to say, hey, we're in the qualifying, you want to run? Come on, let's run, let's, let's do this.
Have someone in the seat for almost a year and a half.
Yeah. That didn't earn it. You all have now earned everything, so.
I, I think like you said, I'm happy to push it to January.
It's, it's worth the wait.
For discussion.
You'll, you'll hear a lot of chatter in between now and then about, you know, different people that may be interested. Or I know there's already been a couple letters submitted, you know, people have called me. So it's just, you know, food for thought. Take our time, think about it and.
So we're in agreement to put it on the agenda for January?
Yes.
God bless you.
Thank you.
So I got. Okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you want to speak? Seventy-five twelve Alpha Court. So I've been here twenty-five years.
Your name?
Oh, Erica, I did say my name, Erica Castro.
Thank you.
I'm on the other side. So thank you, I know it's a lot of work. I come and go, I get involved, then I, I leave, I'm busy. But I'm a little shocked about the five-hundred thousand dollars over budget on the bridge. So and I know that gentleman requested you for like an itemized, that would help us.
I'll put it on there.
Sure, please, it would really, because it would really help me. I'm really like, it's not good.
I'm.
And I'm sorry, I'm not barking at you, I'm just telling you, it's shocking.
Okay.
Shocking. It looks beautiful, it looks pretty.
Can I explain a little bit?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. It's, it's not, there's, there's a thing called change orders that are initiated by us and there's change orders that initiated by the contractor. And then there's, it also include the engineering that was required by the state to have an independent engineer onsite to review the project. So because of the dangers of having a bridge or a water plant or a nuclear facility, you cannot use your own building inspectors, you have to use an engineer that's independent of the engineer who designed it. So that was three-hundred thousand dollars of the five-hundred thousand dollars we're talking about. So, so then there was about two-hundred, and I'm gonna put this all on the website.
Sure.
So. So then the change orders were about two-hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And the biggest one was for unforeseen rocks that we found for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But then about a hundred thousand, I can't remember the exact number, we initiated, we put in lights and other things. So there wasn't that much of, we only had a small percentage of them, what, besides the rocks and the rebar that added up for me.
When you say rocks, they were like the size of a.
Boulders, they would. Boulders, they were the size of Volkswagen's.
That were underneath the.
So that.
Are you going to break it down? Thank you.
Yeah, it's all, it's actually all in the agenda right here. I don't even have to do anything. I'm just going to copy this and put it on the website.
Okay.
So it's all.
Bring some clarity.
It's all transparent, but we didn't have that kind of overages.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Okay, but the reason I'm up here, because I'm kind of worried about Clark Road. We have a similar situation on Pine Tree Lane. And I will call the gentleman, hi, how are you? I'm Erica. I will give him the information. I'm not saying that there's a warrant for anybody that's arrested or anything like that, but it's very active. There's like seven cars there parked all the time and it's right on Pine Tree Lane. It's not good, but I'll report it.
Yes, please, work with.
And I wanted to put it on the record, that way we know that there's something to be done there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now status reports.
Oh, hold on.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We all going to do it at nine o'clock, eight o'clock.
Discussion Jim and Judy Taggett Memorial.
Yes, you know, we discussed, staff discussed this with council members. We said, let's, let's put it on the agenda so we can give you some options. Obviously, we know that the the event of Christmas is named after Jim and Judy Taggett Memorial. So the rock is, we gave you three pictures. The rock is, as you can see, it's in the middle of Pine Tree Park. And the Memorial Park, I'm sorry, Memorial Park. And it was close to the, the tree that we used to put on the corner of Pine Tree and Forest Hill. But now we've relocated the tree on the, the head of the lake where I, I think it looks better, but that's just my opinion. So, so we gave you some options of what we can do. So first, we can leave the stone where it is because it's in a safe spot. And, and then talk about it more when we, we actually implement the, the park's master plan. Because we talked about having some kind of dedication area that's in the plans for residents that gave back and council members that gave back to this great town. So we already, that's already in the works, but obviously that will take many years until we get the funding. The second option that we came up with, and it could be more options, was is install, leave the rock where it is, but put temporary plaques near the Christmas tree or temporary signs that say this is Jim and Judy's memorial event. And we can put that on both Christmas trees, you know, we have one Christmas tree here and one Christmas tree there. So it identifies the event as that it's named after them. Obviously, we can move the rock to the new location of the tree. Or we can move the tree, the Christmas tree, back away from the lake and more towards the roadway. So that's the four options or five options that we, four options that we came up with. So if you guys want to discuss that, please give us some guidance.
I have some of the thoughts on this. And Tim, you've brought this to our attention many times. I've asked for it to be added. We all have. Sure. But thank you for bringing this up multiple times to our attention. So I work with the Historical Society of Palm Beach County. We talk endlessly about memorials, plaques and historic recognition in the community. And at all costs, we try to never move a historic plaque from its original location. That being said, I would pick the leave the stone in its place and have one made temporarily for, to keep next to the current location of the tree. Because we don't know if the tree is going to stay where it is, but it is a part of that ceremony, the historic, a historic part of that ceremony as well. And then in that regard, we would be able to plan around that memorial and that stone, that marker in the master plan. So from a historic preservationist perspective, the stone should stay in its place. But that's just with my background, what I would choose. I'm sure everyone has their own opinions on it.
Did you want to comment, Tim?
Tim Daughtry, fourteen-ten Keller Road. I was really involved with Jim with that event every year, along with Bob Shatner. But Jim was the person that drove that event always. And it was important for him to recognize his wife. Okay? Very important. I mean, I was there when we brought over the electric work to that location, okay? He was in tears, he was in tears, okay? It was, it was a big deal to him. And there's a lot of things that were a big deal to him with about that event. And it's something I've had some differences with some of the town council members about. For Jim, it was always about a real tree. It was always about a real tree. It was always about a real tree. It was always. Jim had his own personal feelings about it. We let him go with it because that, it was his event. And so all I want is for people to be able to recognize the family. And Bobby mentioned it too. I mean, Bobby was very close to them, to Jim too. And he knows it, he knows it too. And it's all about recognizing the people that have driven this town for a very, very, very long time. And the fact is, right now, Greg is the person up here who's been here for a very long time. And there are people like him and Bob Shatner and very other, various other people that came before that we need to recognize and we need to share with people how important they were to our community. Okay? And we all have our differences. I understand that. But the fact is that rock is not being maintained. It's just not being maintained. I stopped by there yesterday again, and it can't even get, it doesn't even get cleaned. People don't know it's there, they can't even see it, they don't understand that it's there. I mean, you, you just don't even, you could hardly read it. It's so filthy. Okay? So if we're going to recognize people, we need to recognize them and we need to maintain it. Okay, and that, that's what I'm talking about. And that's why I said move it. Move it to where the tree is going to be. And if the tree is moved again, move it to that location, okay? Because that's him and his wife's deal, okay? But mainly, it's his wife's deal. It was, it was his wife's deal. But it was Jim because he was the driving force behind the event and always was. So that's all I have to say about that, okay?
So with that said, with her background, would you be okay with that recommendation of leaving it there with a temporary until we move forward with our complete parks plan?
I, I disagree with that.
Okay.
I totally disagree with that. It should have been moved when we moved the tree. That's, that's.
Also, we heard, I heard a lot on Clara, we need to take better care of it.
I, I agree.
No.
It hasn't, it's never been cleaned, I don't think.
All historic site, I mean, the, the idea of moving it back and forth also jeopardizes the, the rock in itself. Like from a historic preservationist standpoint, it is not the best thing to do to move the physical memorial, the original physical memorial. But I understand what you're saying. I think there are ways that we can honor Jim and his wife with a temporary memorial and even more recognition at the ceremony itself and at the event itself to really give them the honor they deserve without moving the original stone. The, the tree should be cut back, it should be maintained and it should be celebrated in our master plan moving forward. But I don't want to go back and forth with you. There's four other.
Yeah, and I understand that too. And we disagree on that. We disagree on that, that's all, okay?
Thank you.
So I respect your opinion on it. I've got a different opinion, okay?
Yeah.
And I was very involved with Jim in this event for many, many years.
Yeah, and I wasn't, and I understand I don't have that history. I'm just speaking strictly from preservationist standards.
And I'm strictly speaking strictly from a relationship.
I appreciate that very much, Tim.
Thank you. With that said, do we have a?
I would, I am okay with leaving the stone in place and putting a temporary plaque next to the tree, but I'm also fine with moving the stone for a couple of weeks to next to the tree and then putting it back. But judging from these pictures, I didn't get, didn't get a chance to walk over there. It also needs to be like the grass trimmed around it and give it a little more.
It needs some more recognition in TLC, that's for sure. I see it all the time. I walk the park on a regular basis. I'm familiar with the stone.
And I'm, I'm okay with the, moving the Christmas tree back to its, the prayer location as well, so.
Greg, do you have any comments?
No, I, I would tend to go with Taylor. I mean, clean it up, leave it there. Let's see where the master plan is going. Because those rocks, when you do move them, they tend to crumble, crack, things like that, so.
I'm, I'm in more in line with Taylor's recommendation.
She does, that's her expertise, so.
So we get a little sign to put next to the tree.
Oh, yeah, boat trees. And I think for a recommendation of when we do the celebrate, the tree lighting ceremony, that we acknowledge.
That's your job, Mayor.
That we include.
Greg, you did that, didn't you do that?
We include that, we include that in the whole event.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure that in the speech, yes.
As well as, I think, for all the reasons that Taylor brought about preservation and then the future master plan. And then we could discuss what we want to do in the future. But I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, keeping the rock words out and come up with a temporary plaque as well as honoring recognition at the, at the tree lighting ceremony.
It'd be really nice to have a piece on our website detailing the history and why the.
I love that.
I totally concur.
Have we ever asked the Historical Society if they have any historic images?
I am. Yeah. Please.
Do we have any in our archives here?
We might have some pictures from prior events that we could show.
It'd be really nice to share that.
And if we don't, I know the library does a lot of, we'll do a lot of research on that. If we don't have any necessary or any photos or anything that would depict it. I know that the library is very good about going back and doing the research.
I will put in a research request too.
Thank you. And, and we'll, and we'll do a website.
Yeah, that would.
We'll do the website thing. Thank you. That's a great idea.
Would be really nice.
Yeah, because it lives forever. So I appreciate that. And obviously, we'll clean the rock and so we'll take care of that.
It can be a great social media post.
Yeah. I, I like the lighting too. I like, and then I didn't know about that. He liked real trees, so thank you, Tim. I didn't know that part.
Okay, do we need a motion or that?
No, just, I think I got consensus.
Thank you again, Tim, for making sure that that got the focus it deserves.
Thank you. All right, I think our status reports, I'll let fire rescue go since they seem to be patiently waiting. I know you've been, you've been, you had the tag team, you had somebody else here standing for you.
It's a busy day. Good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you for having us. Today I have Chief Harvey with me. He's touring all my council meetings with me. And he gets to sit in and see what it's all about, all the hype's about. I was.
Are you, are you being replaced?
Are you being? Oh, no, 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 no. Just, you know, shadowing for future moves.
Trying to dissuade them from taking your post over?
Once he sees what this is all about. Young lady over there brought up something unique. I sit in about five of these a month. I've never gone to one of my own council meetings from my, my own city. So when I saw her say that, I just thought about it. I'd never sit, I never sat in one. So sorry I was late today. Happy Veterans Day to, to all those that served. I believe it, Veterans Day, Mr. Maples, if he's watching online, congratulations, I think. I kind of walked in late to the party. It's a big loss for the town of Lake Clark Shores, but um I'm sure we'll get through it. Sorry, I was late again. I was with Commissioner Flores. Today marks his one-year anniversary as a commissioner. So I got kind of pulled in that direction last minute. Good luck. Luckily, Chief Harvey was coming with me, so I had him sit in for me while I was in here. We're all set for Saturday, as I mentioned last meeting, for the Santa event. Or I, I just, I. Oh.
It's a secret.
Okay, sorry. So for that event, I didn't know if he was coming with us or you guys, are we going to meet him here? He's, I kind of wanted to just inquire about that and maybe I'll.
It's coming on a giant ladder truck.
Yes.
We heard, yeah.
Perfect. So we're all ready that. There would be a truck here and a rescue for medical standby in case it's needed. This last Friday, recruit class ninety-five just graduated. That's thirty-three more recruits added to our big fire department. That's thirty-three more people that your son is senior to. So that's always a good thing. That's always what I used to do when I was a younger, younger guy in the team. I always tried to see how many were getting hired. And then we also have our calendars going around. You're going to see a bunch of firefighters online doing the calendar. Right now, they're doing it with animal control. They're trying to raise money for the animal control. So if you ever see it, I don't know about, we haven't seen it in our department for over ten years. Past my prime to be on it, but there's young gals and misters on it. If, if you guys visit our, our site, you can see it at pbcfr.org. Besides that, our call volumes, about twenty-nine calls this month. We averaged about seven minutes and fifty-four second response time and our turnout times are forty-one seconds, which is great. That's all I have as far as fire rescue. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, counsel?
If you chiefs.
Chief England, you want to? Next in line?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Attached to the council meeting agenda tonight and also posted on our website is the Police Department's monthly report for October of 2025. As you can see, all of our benchmarks are listed. We have had a few more calls for service as compared to this time last, last year. Unfortunately, we did not have any marine patrol activity. The reason was, is we had two officers who were in marine school, so they and the boat were off the, well, off the lake for a better part of two weeks. With a staffing issue the other week, we didn't have an opportunity to put anybody on the water, but we didn't have any calls or complaints at the same time. So luckily that worked.
Look forward to them because they're, they're back.
Exactly. And under North Worded, that's the only thing I would like to share is that we did have the opportunity to go live with our new CAD. I'm sorry, our new computer software for code enforcement. It went live the first Monday of November. So we're looking forward to getting a lot of data in there and then opening up to the public. So everybody has the opportunity to see all of the open or historic cases moving forward from this point.
Thank you. Any questions?
So in regards to everything we heard about earlier, without giving specifics, that, those would come in as calls for service?
We did have three calls for service the last few weeks at that residence that we responded to.
And before that, like previous reports, we weren't hearing about this necessarily because now it's all over social media. And so is it three calls for service to the best of your knowledge for that location overall?
So I don't have the historical information on that. We have some struggles with historical information as far as the CAD system is concerned. But since I've been made aware of the first call for service and the subsequent two calls after that, it's only been those three calls to this point.
Okay. I guess I had a little bit of a concern about the gentleman that came up giving out his phone number. And if people feel like now they're not going to call you and call him if something serious is going on and they're trying, you know, out of trying to apprehend this guy or desperation, it seems like there might be like that almost could present an unsafe situation in addition to what's transpiring there. So I just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on that. I don't know if you'd like to go speak with them or?
Right, so it is a confusing thought, so it's good to add a little understanding to it. So they're basically two different situations. They sort of co-mingle, but they're really separate. One is there are calls for services regarding nuisances that are going on there. And there's a civil matter that's going on between a landlord and a tenant and somebody who is or is, does not have a, a right to be there in an eviction process. That's, that's one. And the neighbor's complaining about obviously quality of life issues associated with the people that are living there. In addition, there is one individual who is living there that apparently has an active warrant out of the state of North Carolina that's not extraditable, meaning that law enforcement in the state of Florida does now the opportunity to go take him into custody and send him back to North Carolina. That is completely separate.
You can take him in custody. You just can't take him in custody and send him back.
We cannot, law enforcement in the state of Florida cannot take him into custody because he does not have an active warrant.
No, you could take him.
Like if something happened at the site and.
If he were to, if that individual or any individual at the property were to commit a crime.
Right.
Then obviously we would be able to act upon that. But as far as what the individual who, who spoke, the investigator. then obviously we would be able to act upon that. But as far as what the individual who, who spoke, the investigator, um, in his assertion that there was an active warrant out of North Carolina, that is not valid in the state of Florida. So law enforcement in the state of Florida would not be able to act on that warrant, that alleged warrant.
Right. Okay. Do you guys understand what I'm asking though about, I don't know if there's some sort of communication that needs to happen.
So what I would do to answer that, I, what I'd do is I would reiterate to the community, always call us when you have a concern. If you, if you, if you think something's astray, if you have a, a complaint, um, do not wait till the next day to, to call. Do not, uh, you know, tell a neighbor, don't go on social media, call us immediately. Let us know so we can go out there and we can address the issue. You are then welcome to reach out to the police department and call me and follow up the next day or the next business day. I'd be more than happy to go out to somebody's house. We can walk down the street, then come to the police department. We can talk about the issue, uh, moving forward. But I, I encourage everybody, if they see something, call and say something immediately. So we're, we're addressing it right then and there.
Okay.
Chief, it was mentioned earlier about bonfires. Are the fires there in a fire pit or are they just on the ground, a pile of, of wood? And is there an ordinance against that?
Maybe John had some, like, I personally have not seen the fire.
Do we have an ordinance against, on the ground?
We, we, this is, uh, uh, status reports and I really think we should discourage this discussion.
Okay.
Uh, it needs to take place out of the meeting, not in the meeting, and we need to just continue with the status reports.
I do think it's important for our residents to have a point of contact and to understand
Absolutely.
that when something's happening, they're, the person they need to pick up the phone and call is still the police.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
And I don't think that was really made clear when the room was full here, which is what, like rather they have to go twenty more times this week until something happens. That should be what is reiterated to our residents.
We agree. I don't disagree at all.
We agree.
No, I, I was very convoluted and as the chief mentioned, there's multiple tier of issues that were all blended and that, that's where the confusion lies. So yes, if anybody has an issue, call nine-one-one or call the police and, and have the issue addressed. And then you, you'll handle it from there.
Follow up with me the next day, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Charlie, there we go.
Um, my report, I believe, was put on the dais. It was a little late. I apologize for that, but, uh, the report is there and it includes all of the things I have worked on since the last meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions in the report?
Nope.
No. And we'll finish up with Joe.
Thank you. Um, upcoming, uh, meetings, we have one on December ninth, which is back to our normal second Tuesday. And then we have another switch October, I mean, January twentieth, because some of us will be in Tallahassee. So that I think is the third Tuesday. Um, upcoming events tomorrow, we have Footprints Senior Club. It's a, it's a pretty interesting topic. It's on, uh, hearing loss. And, uh, I actually believe, uh, the speaker's gonna bring phones if, for free, if someone needs a, a phone. So, um, it's a pretty good, pretty interesting subject. Uh, next on the sixth, right here at the town hall site, we're gonna have the Jim and Judy Tag at Memorial Christmas, um, tree lighting. And, um, we're also gonna have the menorah lighting here, right here in this chambers on December fourteenth. And on the fifteenth, we'll have the contest for the home decorating. Um, most of the paving is complete. We're still waiting on, they have to wait, uh, after the roads have been paved to put down the permanent striping. They used to wait a month, but now they, they say they only have to wait a week. So, uh, but this, the whole project should be completed by, and I think it looks great by the end of the month. Yes, Chief is correct. We did go live, but we didn't go live politically on, not politically, um, to the residents, uh, on the code enforcement because we want to make sure it works perfectly. But then after that, we will put it on the buzz. We will put it out everywhere because you have to actually get, um, create an account and then you can file a complaint. You can look at, uh, who actually is being cited. You can actually possibly pay fines. So it's a very transparent, uh, program. We're excited to launch. Uh, and we're gonna do that shortly with our residents. But you have to, everything is the same state statute. You cannot do it anonymously. You have to give your name if you want to file a complaint. Uh, good news on, uh, we've been dealing with FDOT. They're doing a project, uh, in the middle of Forest Hill Boulevard, all the way to West Palm going east. And we've had some good discussions with them and the two discussions we asked for is if they can make the crosswalk on Pine Tree and on Forest Hill Boulevard more pedestrian and golf cart friendly. So, uh, initial conversations and, and this project is not till late, it's a whole year away. Uh, but ni- initial conversations are going well with that. And we've also added that we also have the signs do not block the box, but, uh, we also would like to see them actually paint the, the, uh, do not, the box in that intersection. So the motors can see not to block the blocks that is outlined. So, um, so everything is receptive with the state right now. So we're working on that and it should be at no cost because these are safety, um, i- issues and they'll pay for safety issues for, uh, aesthetic we have to pay for. As you know, we're working on this, uh, vegetation, uh, education program. We got lots of complaints, uh, a couple of months ago or about a month ago about vegetation, that it's been out too long. It's, it's blocking the roadway. All, there's also safety concerns. Cause just remember, um, if, if you don't see walkers or you don't see children, if they're blocked by vegetation. So there is a safety concern by having it out too early. So we, we have to act on this. We don't have discretion like a police officer has discretion on a, um, a ticket or traffic violation. So we have to act. So we've been sending out notices and we're trying to educate the public on our current code. And we're not gonna do any enforcement, uh, right now until January first. So, um, if you have any questions, uh, obviously let us know. But if, if you you cannot, you cannot change, we cannot change the code. We have to abide by it. And, and the code is very common to other, as other towns, uh, the twenty-four hours. All right, um, as, uh, the other items are listed, but as I already said, we, we applied for a four hundred thousand dollar grant with the Lake and Water Conservation Fund. Um, other items are, are minor. Oh, well, that one's not minor. Palm Beach County has advised us that, um, they're gonna go out to bid sometime in January for a major project on Florida Mango. And that will be from some, somewhere around, uh, Edgewood or Meadow, I heard, and go all the way to tenth. I believe there's two bridges involved in that, so it'll be major, major work and, um, major inconvenience. Um, and I've, obviously we'll do a campaign soon as we know what the stages and steps and, um, the phases of the project. Um, so, um, the other thing is obviously we keep adding to the, the tree lighting. Uh, we, we order now two bounce houses for different groups. Mary wanted axe throwing in, in, uh, content, uh, right, Mary? You said you wanted the axe throwing? So we're gonna have axe throwing and, uh, a rock climbing wall. So we're all gonna do rock climbing. So.
Our, our liability in terms of.
I'm gonna really be sore after this, but I'm gonna try it. Um.
Rock climbing, I can.
Is there someone monitoring the two age groups for the two bounce houses?
We always have.
It was like a major situation.
We, we always have, especially by age group, we always have someone for the minor, um, that the rock climbing will, yes, we'll have somebody there too. Yes.
And you're gonna have someone like basically saying like no, like sixteen-year-old kids on with like the three.
Yeah, that, they provide, but we also like to provide our own staff because we, we like to be in control.
Yeah, because last time it was like moms policing it and it got a little.
Which, which event was that?
I wanna say it was, um, over the summer almost.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't the last one, but yeah, if you see anything like that, let me know. I'm obviously there. So, um, but yeah, we, we believe we have to have our own employee there too with, to supplement, because it does get crazy. So there's a couple more comments, but nothing big. If anybody has any comments. Want me to talk about that?
Uh, you said the, the, you just wanna touch on the must, Monster Mash.
Yeah, they, that, yeah, the Halloween Monster Mash event went great. Um, the turnout wasn't great because we found out at a later date that there was a lot of trunk events in all the schools, the elementary and middle school. So we'll look at that, uh, next year when we're planning that, um, because that Friday, just everyone, everybody did prod, um, events that Friday right before Halloween.
And we acknowledged the winner of the Halloween home decorating contest.
Yeah, it was fun. I drove around with, uh, three residents and, uh, we had a good time and I always enjoyed doing that.
That was a nice, that was a nice house.
I didn't get any of the pictures. It's good. I took the pictures.
That was intentional.
Joe, would you please clarify what the change to the crosswalk is?
This crosswalk?
Yeah, Pine Tree, uh, to, I mean, across Forest Hill.
Yes, it's conceptual now, but we want it to be more, um, it's not golf cart friendly at all. It's a pedestrian walk. So we want it to be not only for pedestrians, but for golf carts. The mayor and I has gone across that many times with the golf cart and it's, yeah, and we, also I went with you, Kristy, on a golf cart. It's, it's not really the easiest and safest way, but to make a, the middle and the median is, they call those safe havens. So you, so you can land somewhere safely in the middle of, of the roadway. So, um, not only for pedestrians, for, for golf.
I thought we had a safe haven.
There is a safe haven, but it's not built for golf carts.
Oh, so did we need to just widen it and make a, the curve better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any council comments, Greg?
Yes. Um, first of all, ladies, congratulations. Our store for all of you. You have a lot of free time on your hands, so let's get to work now. Uh, Joe, I would like to, uh, see if we can have information brought to us as a council to look at the final fifteen percent of the plan for Septic to Sewer. We've had in October or September, we had the DEP guy here. He basically said, if you don't have this, there's no money. We had the engineer in here last month and he basically said the same thing. So I think it's time for you to bring the council information. Uh, whatever dollars it's gonna be to see this final fifteen percent through to the end. So that in the event when we do go or we do get funding or have anything available to us, we have that in place. So I think the time, you know, is now, uh, bring us some info and let's have a discussion about it and see where we are.
Is, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I believe I'm gonna contact the engineer and, and put this on the next agenda of what's left to get a shovel ready. I think that's what you're saying. And the cost, yeah, yeah, obviously the costs and the time and all that stuff.
Sure.
Is, is that a three heads?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I will take care of that.
Okay, another net, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving. Everybody stay safe. Okay? Thank you so much.
Um, I wanna thank staff, uh, for all of their work on the previous events. I also missed the Monster Mash because of a
Another event.
competing event, yeah. Actually, there was two.
Our event was better.
It's, it's madness right now, um, with all of the events, but I know you guys are like really doing overtime and it's really appreciated. And I think our neighborhood really shines during the holidays. And I was so excited to see the garling going up on the poles. That being said, um, the earlier, which I know we're not supposed to discuss, the earlier conversation here was pretty horrifying to me. More so that, um, I learned about everything through Facebook, which I guess is what happens in small neighborhoods like ours, but um, I, I wanna make sure that we're doing everything that we possibly can in our power, which is really so little, um, from us at least, to, to continue to make Lake Clark Shores a safe neighborhood. Um, I walk past all the time with my little boy to that park. Um, so anyways, just very horrified by some of the things that we heard. Um, and again, I wanna inter- reiterate thanks to Tim Dottry for, um, consistently pushing us on that target memorial. I, I think it's a really important piece of our history. I'm excited that we're gonna highlight it, um, moving forward in other ways, um, because it's also, I think, so important for all the new families that are moving here to really embrace and understand the history of Lake Clark Shores and how important that is. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, uh, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
And to you as well.
Thank you.
Um, I, I, um, I'm just so tip, so pleased with, uh, the, uh, bottom half of, of the road and Pine Tree Lane. It looks beautiful. Uh, the repaving. Job well done.
Thank you.
And I, I hope we're getting good comments from the neighbors thanking us for it.
We are.
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome.
Yes, we are.
Um, I have received comments about the, the parade and the fact that it appears that we're not having a Christmas parade this year. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sad about that as well. Uh, I don't know if it's, uh, too late to do anything in that regard. And I had a conversation with one of my contacts at the, the sheriff's office. And I said, uh, you know, I've done, on a couple of tours with them. And I said, you know, could you maybe bring the, uh, you know, the, uh, one of your trucks, like a, a, a the, the bomb squad truck or one of the other trucks to our, our barbecue? And he said, he, he said, yeah, what else do you want? He says, I'll bring all of them. Um, and, and then he, then he asked me, do you have anywhere for me to land a helicopter? How about if we take the nets off the tennis courts?
Look, it's big enough.
So they're, they're very. They're very willing to, uh, to, to bring a lot of, of fun equipment that.
We actually get their smoker every year. They, they donate their sofa for use. Um, so we, so we, we work closely with the sheriff's.
No, 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 smoker and helicopter, entirely different leagues.
You're right. You're right. Good comment. You're right.
We'd have to, you done?
Uh, yes, just that, uh, Joe, put that on your, on your, um, your to-do list to, to, to speak, you know, figure out what, what, um, what you want us to, to get for them. Cause I have, uh, they're willing and able.
Thank you.
If you're really serious, we can work with, uh, the fire department as far as securing LZ and the size of the helicopter and what, what the parameters were, because each helicopter is different parameters for a landing zone.
Oh, we can have competing helicopters now?
Lucky to find in our town, a, a spot for one helicopter. It's, we're pretty limited on our.
Well, the fire department does bring their large flag and we really appreciate that.
Wonderful truck with a big flag.
The, the ladder truck with the flag. So thank you so much.
So with that said, thank you for all your comments. Thank you for the congratulations. Congratulations to you ladies as well, uh, on a campaign for two more years. We'll, uh, hopefully we can make a difference here. Uh, I wanna thank the staff for all the things they've done. We've done many, we, we, I know with staff here behind the scenes, but the staff out in the, the streets, the utility guys have been working hard to put the lights up and they're still not done. They're still working as we speak. Uh, I'm excited about the new, uh, the light, the, the, all the Christmas events that are coming up. We have our new signs up on the, the banners, which I'm excited about as well. Uh, we just, I think we're moving forward. I am concerned and I think everybody's concerned on the council of the issue we just had with, uh, the house on Clark Road. Uh, hopefully we can get a little more heads up when something like this happens. I know it was, uh, it was dynamic and it was happening very quickly. Uh, it, it concerns me from many different levels, not only safety level, but the, the, the town itself, this, the community involvement, how it affects all the neighbors, how it's affected the kids, and it affects the whole outlook of the community. So I think, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna keep that, highlight of that. That, uh, Jim Judy Taggett, I, I believe, I'm definitely, uh, gonna continue to bring that to light. We wanna, I already discussed with Joe, how we can clean it up and light it up and pay more attention to it as well as come up with the, what we're gonna do at the tree lighting ceremony. I, I love this town. And just like everything else in life, there's always room for improvement and I'm, that includes myself. So I, I appreciate the staff. That only includes this, this staff, our staff on the council and all our council members. So I, I really appreciate what we do and working together because nobody does, is an island and nobody does it alone. It's, it takes a team and a team effort to get this done. So thank you. And, uh, that's, anything else anybody else wants to say? I think we have a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second. So approved.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And thank you all for coming.